All righty. Good afternoon. This is a Commissioner's Study Session Workshop to discuss Dominion Voting Machines and potential extension or replacement. This morning, we heard a very thorough, I think, two-hour-plus presentation from Clear Ballot, which is one of two systems that are authorized for use in Colorado. We had invited Dominion to provide a similar presentation. My understanding is they've elected not to participate in person and offered to speak with the Board by phone, but only if it was not a public meeting. So it's 1:01:37, and they aren't here, so I assume they didn't reconsider. And we cannot have the three of us having calls that are not public to discuss public policy. So with that, I will turn this back to Rhonda, and I know both you and Alice and Stephanie have extensive experience with Dominion. So I guess based on your knowledge and information they've shared with you, I do think they provided a quote for extending their services. But be very interested in hearing what your thoughts are in terms of comparison with the only other alternative we have.
Thank you. As you said, we have the choice between Dominion Voting Systems, which we currently use, and first signed a contract for them in 2017, and Clear Ballot. Those are the only two systems that are certified in Colorado for use. And we have been provided with a quote, but the Dominion representatives chose not to show up or answer questions with this. So what would you like?
I think maybe a history might be a good idea, just to catch those up that are here and online, as to how we got to this point, how we started with Dominion, and where we are with that.
In 2016, Elbert County had a voting system, and it was through Dominion, but it was an old DOS system and old scanners that looked like eight-track cartridges. And it was failing. We were the only ones in the state with that system. And we ended up doing the 2016 presidential election with that. And during that time, the Secretary of State had a push to move the whole state to the same voting system, which there were advantages to that because when we had our system, we had no support. There was nobody else in the state, nor the state personnel, that knew anything about our system. And at that time, they certified Dominion Voting Systems, and it was version 5.2. That was the only system that was available for us to go to, and because our equipment was failing, we moved to that system. And shortly after that, I believe it was later in 2017, Clear Ballot came on board and was certified by the state. Most of the counties in Colorado had already moved to Dominion Voting Systems. And so at this point, there are two counties that use Clear Ballot. The rest of them use Dominion. There is one county, I believe, that just hand counts because they're small enough, under 1,000 voters. They can just hand count, and they're required to have ADA accessible devices, but they hand count. So we have used this system since 2017, when we got it. What else?
Fielding was funded by this Secretary of State, wasn't it?
Was it? What? I'm sorry.
The fielding of the equipment we have now, isn't that heavily subsidized?
We had HAVA grants to get it to start with, yes.
And I'll just add on there to what Rhonda says. We also, at that time, it was a consideration Dominion was the only choice that we had. But also, we had choices within that, whether to purchase equipment or lease the equipment. The county was not in a financial position to be able to purchase the number. It was in excess of a six-figure number if we were to purchase all that. And so we really were pigeonholed into Dominion and really having to go with the lease of the equipment just because of the finances, the financial state of the county. And so that is, I guess, it's where we were. There was no, we really didn't have a lot of choices in how we put that agreement together. We were kind of at the mercy of everybody because we needed the equipment so bad. It would have been nice, even at that time, to have other choices, but we did not. It'd been nice if the county was in better financial shape that could have had other choices, but we weren't. So it's just a reality of where we were and what we ended up with. So I think that history.
Was the grant funding for Dominion only?
It would have been at the time because they were the only ones that were certified.
Understood.
And the grant, we had had some HAVA grants before for the equipment that they had before, and it really turned out to be a big hassle because when we went to get rid of that equipment, they needed all the, it was with HAVA money. And so Secretary of State Williams, at that time, used the HAVA funding for implementation and training, so it wasn't tied forever to the equipment, so that the counties had more leeway on that equipment, and we weren't under those, because there was reporting every year, and there's all sorts of stuff when you get the federal HAVA grants. And so he was able to use that grant money for implementation rather than to purchase the equipment.
What is their annual charges?
So it's on a graduated scale. Year one started out at $25,248, and this year, we paid $29,000.
Pretty much, not exactly, but right about what we're being offered by Clear Ballot?
Yes. Yes.
Well, any contract we enter to is a public document, so I'm sure Clear Ballot had access to that document.
They seem to be pretty much on the ball.
So Dominion offered to extend their contract with them, and they would be refreshing the equipment and bringing in new equipment that is updated, hopefully, because this is all out of warranty. But bringing in the new equipment and our ballot marking devices that we currently have that our voters can come in, the touchscreen devices, all their Samsung tablets. So they all have Wi-Fi and everything else in them, and the new ones supposedly are made without that.
And I think you indicated that some of the equipment we have now is well out of warranty, but was, it was supposed to be maintained and warranted or replaced under the current contract?
That's what we understood.
I think all that equipment that we currently have was the original equipment.
It was the original equipment. We've had some of our ballot marking devices replaced that have been damaged or not working as well, but the rest of the, all of the computers have been. So this is our tabulator. It was shipped in June of 16, registered in Australia, and the warranty expired in June of 2019.
And it's 2024?
Yes, so we'll be running a presidential election with that tabulator.
If it doesn't die before November?
We have done extensive verification. Besides the state's risk-limiting audits and other audits, we have done numerous hand counts and have never found that the tabulators were incorrect, not ever, ever. So here is the extension that we were offered through Dominion and just the prices that we were offered for a six-year or eight-year.
Just have one copy.
I thought I had more, but.
Amanda, can we get you to make a copy of this for us? I think since Dominion representative are not here, it might be helpful if we created a list of questions similar to what we asked the Clear Ballot folks and see if we could get some response that way.
Would be fair if we're considering two offers or two proposals to at least have the same questions asked of both.
And I guess some of the questions, we would already know the answers since we're familiar with the Dominion system, but it would be nice to hear some confirmations on additional items, I think.
Just based on discussions you may have had, are there, if it were extended in new equipment or refreshed equipment is provided, are there any new capabilities or changes to what we have been using functionally that would differ from what Clear Ballot was offering?
I think from what I can tell, it's substantially the same. We just upgraded, we would get the newer touchscreen devices, ballot marking devices. We purchased printers for those recently that can do up to a 22-inch ballot, and so we are now required to do a full-face ballot, which means not a QR code or not a list printed out from when the voter makes their selection. So it's required to print out a full ballot, but we already purchased those printers, and then the rest of the equipment would be replaced. And I have not heard of new functionality. Right now, it is capable of doing ranked choice voting, which is something that has been tossed around a lot, but this system is capable. If we had to do a ranked choice voting contest right now, there's some pretty hefty licensing fees we'd have to pay.
Their roll-up on the quote notes that election services such as ballot programming and onsite services are billed separately. Have we used their ballot programming in the past? And it looks like Clear Ballot was set up to do that in-house relatively simply, so.
Yep. We have used their programming services in the past, and since 2020, we started in January of 2020, programming our own, so we had the control over that and could make the changes to our own ballots. And also onsite support, we have chosen not to have, like, election day support and stuff like that since we are capable of doing that ourselves.
Didn't feel there was much value added in those extra charges?
Uh-uh.
Well, in particular, I'll give credit to Rhonda on programing the ballot there. That year, we did have issues, Dominion had issues across the nation, really, with all the support that they were to do in helping people design the ballot. We actually ended up getting a contract employee that was a former clerk in Colorado that was a current county treasurer, that ended up being the person to help with the ballot design. And so that was a little bit of a problem, and she did a fine job, but it put us behind schedule because they didn't have enough staff helping. And at that point, Rhonda said, "I think I can do this," and just went for it. So that's why we have started designing in-house.
And they still do charge if they have to come out for, so if we have trusted build, we need to do any upgrade, like when we got these printers, we have to do upgrades. I believe they charge $1,500 a day to come out and support that. So anytime they have to come out to do something. And I do have good support by the phone, so when I'm programming, I am able to call and get my questions answered, so that has been, that has been good.
The local representative has been.
The local representative has.
Been responsive.
Yeah, David Stahl has been wonderful to work with.
In your discussions here, Rhonda, what was going to happen to our current equipment? How would the change be made from the new agreement with Dominion to with the old equipment? Have there been any discussion on that?
I haven't had discussion, but I read, I believe it's in our contract, that once we are, I'll see if I can find it, but once we are done with our contract, then we have to turn over all of the equipment back to them. And I know when they came down to change out the printers, they packed up and took all the printers that they replaced. So I'm assuming that is the same program, yeah. Then we just fill out forms with the state on disposition of equipment and new equipment.
I think the timing on this is beneficial to us as well, as next year, all that's scheduled will be election in the fall of 2025. And so either choice that we have here before us, there should be some time for the transition, whether it's to Clear Ballot or whether it's with the new equipment from Dominion, barring something weird recall or something that may require an additional election. But nothing's scheduled till November of '25, which I think really helps us that we've got a cushion there that it doesn't have to, maybe January 1, they don't have to be completely up and running, but that we have that little bit of cushion built in for the year.
It says, "Return of software upon termination or expiration of this agreement. Licenses shall forthwith return to licenser all software in licensee's possession or control or destroy all such software from any electronic media and certify in writing to licenser that has been destroyed."
The only software we have resides on the system.
Yes.
On their drives.
Mm-hmm.
Now, these two pages we have, do you add this $36,000 to 2025? I'm talking about the page where they got the, yeah, you got there in your hand.
Yeah, I think these fees are what we would actually pay. And when I asked about outright purchase versus managed service agreement, he said it was, he sent me an email, and it was pretty much the same. Let's see, the outright purchase of the refresh is $36,299.7, and then he said license would be $6,150 per year warranty, $8,630 per year. But then he said the six-year, so the six-year MSA payment would be, this was in July, so it has changed even since then. Would be $22,000, eight-year MSA payment would be $20,000. That would be the first.
The first year. So as I read this grant, if we purchased outright, we'd have the purchase price, but they still have the ongoing expense on the annual license fee, annual warranties of the $8,630 plus the $6,150.
Would you have to pay an extra for onsite helping?
Yes.
Either way, yes.
It's like if we were talking over a six-year period, we'd have the $36,000 purchase plus another $8,600 a year plus any onsite work. Six times eighty-three.
Twenty-four eighty also. Would be close to $9,000, $9,000 a month, a year in addition to the purchase.
You're pushing over a six-year period, almost the same.
It'd be very similar.
Up front, almost the.
They did that last time, too. Actual purchase versus the MSA difference was not that much. The extra things was the MSA, was the refresh of equipment and that sort of thing that we haven't seen, but that was included in there, where if you just purchased the equipment and then you needed new equipment, then you needed to buy new equipment. Talk to us a little bit about the difference in the programming, because I know that that at times has been a frustration between what you see with Clear Ballot versus what you know happens with Dominion, and I'd love to hear from Stephanie, too.
So with Dominion, we had several times of one of the ladies that helped write some of the programming, honestly, help us out, and I have learned to do it fairly painfully, but it's not an easy thing. A lot of the counties pay Dominion to go ahead and program their ballots for them. We can do it, and the styling is just, it's difficult. It is difficult, and I'm, there are some challenges with Clear Ballot, too, but from what I understand, with Clear Ballot, it has a template, and when you upload the information from the voter registration system from SCORE, it has all of the races, the candidates, all the information in it, and it will kind of pop it in the template, and then we are able to style that. It sounds a whole lot easier to me, and the support is local, and they've said they'll walk us through that also.
I think it was mentioned earlier, there's something about on Dominion that a template arrives.
Yes. Dominion sends a thumb drive, yeah. And actually, the last election, I got the thumb drive, and it had no label on it, and it looked like a label had been torn off. And I called up, and I said, "What is this?" Because they've always been nicely labeled, and he said, "Oh, yeah, we reuse the thumb Made me a little nervous for $29,000 that we paid this year that they did, gave us a used thumb drive. But yeah, we load the template and then load the information from Dominion or from SCORE.
One of the things about Dominion is, if you think of it in a way that.
Put that closer to you.
They provide all the structures, so if you need a file or you need an update or when they're figuring out ballot styles, all these different things, they send them on jump drives out to us. Or we get them electronically, and we deal with them based on their specific instructions, okay? If we had Clear Ballot, opposite side of the fence, it's basically a very well-built database. And so if we want to change the oil, we can. If we want to change anything about it, you know, I mean, as far as the look, the feel, the touch, we can, and it doesn't take quantum physics on a jump drive to get there. And so sometimes, just that ability to run your own, not run your own system, but manage your own system without a jump drive from someone else is a great opportunity because our ballot will still have to be, you know, certified and so on and so forth. Therefore, to have that freedom and flexibility, it's great. And like what Rhonda was saying, they'll provide basic templates, or we'll create, almost like, we could create it almost like a template for each type of election, and that could be, you know, for a general, for a primary. And so then we would just manifest it over and just continue to build off of it or make whatever changes. So like, the primary we're doing now, we've got an extra election on the side because of the resignation, and so that changes the ballot look and feel and the way it works. And so we could easily just make those adaptations and move forward, whereas in our real-life experience recently, we kept waiting and waiting and waiting to find out how they wanted the state to handle it or how they wanted each county, you know, as far as from the programming perspective and how we were going to do it to be able to account for both elections at the same time. So some of that freedom, and if you know anything about an SQL database, they're pretty good, and these guys have built it quite well, and so it's very, it would be a good thing. But to have what Dominion hands down, Dominion doesn't necessarily support Clear Ballot. I mean, they'll offer the little bits that we might want, but they're not a team, right? That's fair.
That's fair. Yeah, some of the capabilities with Clear Ballot that we've been presented with, too, is audits, that they have a lot of capabilities to help with the audits. They can also, with the adjudication, so with Dominion, we scan the ballots in. If we have a ballot that's torn, corner's torn off of it, then it won't see all those timing marks, then our process is we have to duplicate that ballot. So my belief is that anytime we can avoid touching a voter's ballot, we want to do that. We want that ballot to be cast as the voter cast it. Well, with the Clear Ballot system, we can scan that ballot in, it has a torn corner, it will come up on the system, there will be an image of it, and we can go ahead and put those votes in the way it's voted, but we're not duplicating that ballot. So I think that's a big benefit for our voters, because anytime we have to decide voter intent, that's not ideal.
The only drawback, I mean, very clear potential drawback from Clear Ballot that I can see is, as cool as we thought, those ICX boxes, the touchscreens, that metal aluminum looking casting, and I know that we could educate, we could have town halls, or we could write an article or whatever to familiarize people, maybe let them come down and touch them when it's not the middle of an election and really get familiar with it. But I do see a potential for people to question, is there a bomb in there? You know, what's in the box, like a security issue? And so I think that if we do choose clear, then we've got to be ready to be in front of that and educate people that, because they're saying that they just stick in this box, like you just lift up the screen and away you go, so it's not like you're dismantling it. So there's a potential, I'm not wishing that on us, but I think we need to consider it, because it looks like a toolbox that we're rolling into.
Go ahead. No, and I think there is a lot of, actually, perhaps not misplaced angst and anxiety and mistrust, so I think just, yeah, the more people are familiar with things, the better. So, I think just, yeah, the more people are familiar with things, the better.
I know that our touchscreens, there was talk about replacing those Samsung tablets with ones that were not wirelessly accessible. Has there been any more discussion on that?
With Dominion?
Yeah, or at the state level too. They were talking about it at one time as well.
Yes, and I believe we would be required to do that next year. We decided not to go forward with that because of the expense of upgrading that when we were looking at whether we wanted to go with this system or not. So, we would have had to actually put out the money and buy that and then give it back to Dominion as far as I can tell.
So, that wouldn't have been part of the managed services option of our equipment?
Yeah, when, if we go with this upgrade, they would be, they would be included. But we had decided not to do that before because we didn't want to go to that expense. Although there are wireless devices in our voting tablets now.
One thing to consider, and I don't know if it's a part of the actual, like, the order that we placed with them upon initiation, but the ICXs that we have, which are just the tablets encased in the plastic, are the lowest-grade ICX that they offer. So, there's one that's slightly bigger. And then there's one that's like a 30, 32-inch flat screen. There is no ICX. So, I mean, we're really on the low level and I don't know if that's because of budgeting and pricing. You know, they just re-manufacture them or re-whatever. When people get rid of them in, in those smaller counties, I don't know why. But I do know they are the least quality of the ICXs that they have.
And we found out that we will have, because of buying equipment, either vendor that we go with has told us that they use COTS commercial, I couldn't think of the commercial, commercial off-the-shelf and that it is impossible to buy them without wireless capabilities. And we found that with both systems, that is the case and that they will go in and disable those capabilities. But we are not able to get those computers without those capabilities with either system.
I know you were referring to the original, our older contract is, do you know if they've updated or there would be an updated master service agreement with?
I thought I printed this out, but I did not. Let me, let me grab this real quick.
If they do, that's good. It would be good to have both side-by-side review.
Yeah, I.
I wouldn't know what I'm looking at. Somebody, somebody, we have people.
Yeah.
Somebody who does, I mean, I'm sure there's difference.
There is a.
What those differences are.
Ten-page update to the original 2017 agreement, so.
It's not a brand-new one, it's an update to what was already in place.
It's an amendment to the vote, First Amendment to the Voting System and Managed Services Agreement. But that was made in, in January 1 of 2017.
Well, good. I'm glad we have an attorney and a good IT department, so.
I'm going to lose it here in a second.
You're going to lose it? So, no, I'm glad, if we have access to it, that'll be when we get one from Clear Ballot. It would be good to have yourselves, the attorney and IT scan through both and.
Thinking that I sent, I printed that out and I don't see that I did, so to bring it, but yeah. That is, it's just an amendment to the original agreement.
Well, we have it, that's really what I was asking.
And it does have prices. And it's basically these prices, it's just gives you, oh, no. It's the 2017, they put that all out. Albert County is currently in possession of the following equipment, which will not be included in this MSA. Following the First Amendment, Dominion will pick up and remove this equipment at its own expense. So. They don't have that right either, but that's okay.
The amount of equipment?
Well, they have Imagerast X BMD 21-inch Classic. I don't think the Classic is what we have. Anyway, that's okay.
I'm picking it up. That's the way we go.
We do have ICXs.
So, I agree with seeing things side-by-side with what Clear Ballot has versus Dominion is important. And I would like to submit some questions to Dominion based on what we know and what Clear Ballot has promised capabilities. And put that together to submit and see if they'll at least answer questions that way.
That's probably where we're at right now. We can talk about our experience, but if we're going to compare two proposals, they need to have the opportunity to answer the same questions that were asked. If they choose to, we'll have something to compare.
Correct.
Yeah.
And they're saying they will update the, I just lost it. During the term, Dominion shall provide upgrades to the customer under the following conditions. So, they'll upgrade the software under the law at no additional cost, although they do charge $1,500 a day to come down. So, that's. And certification requirements Dominion shall not provide and shall not be obligated to provide any upgrade or their software update that has not been certified. And just for grins and giggles, we cannot reverse-engineer, disassemble, decompile, decipher, or analyze the software in whole or in part. We will try to refrain.
Sounds good.
Any last comments, concerns, anything? I think we've exhausted what we know about them. Probably not appropriate to speak for them, so we'll let them speak for themselves or stay silent. It's 1:38 and we're going to close down this workshop. They've certainly had their opportunity to be here, so thank you.